Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, you understand?
Okay, get to this legal jargon.
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay.
I understood. We attended.
Look at what's on the thumbs up. See if we can hear me.
Hello, Derek, okay. This is a mouth shot.
For his file.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Bringing it up.
Well, a few of them. I didn't read the whole thing.
At least Harold Jones, he didn't mind closer.
Which one does he want to talk about? Right. Which one specifically do you want to talk about? Which one specifically do you want to talk about or to get done tonight? The last?
Plus, he had one today. I think he had one on Friday.
Oh, yeah, and halfway's one, didn't he?
No, he didn't. Nobody had one for nursing or work.
Yeah, I get a pro of this.
Yeah, there've been so many like that, I can't keep them all straight. Are you responsible for those signs over at the side of those apartments over there? Because they're nice.
Which apartment? Oh, one that just, that place couldn't see who was, because they were so faded.
Yeah, I thought that looked good.
Yeah, I had to have, I had to hit something.
I figured you did.
When I think about the grass or the, I mean, the bushes where the firemen can see the policeman who had rest of the building, it's such a city.
Yeah.
I'm getting a little settled in after.
It takes a while, doesn't it?
Yeah, we have like 45 within progress. We're not even done yet.
That'll be crazy.
It will be crazy. There's a one.
Okay. Yep.
I have, where'd he go?
I don't know why I looked at that. All right.
I'm a little jealous.
I don't, but I have a hard time taking things seriously.
All right, let's go here. Follow orders. Roll call.
Lund.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Jacob.
Here. You need to approve the minutes?
Oh, you do?
No, I need somebody to.
Boy, that's clever.
I'd like to, but I think I need somebody too.
Move to approve. Some, some. Move to approve.
Thank you, Bob. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. All right.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. All right, we got some proclamations to do tonight. All right, Public Works. Is this one that's got the small print on it?
Yeah.
It gets better.
I found out on my shoe.
Okay, all right. Warrensburg, Missouri proclamation. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities and services are of vital importance to the sustainable communities and to the health, safety and well-being of the people of the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees from state and local government and the private sectors who are responsible for and who plan, design, build, operate and maintain the transportation, water supply, public building structures and facilities and deliver solid waste services, transit and services which are essential to the servicing of our citizens. And whereas it is in the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the United States of America to gain knowledge and to maintain an interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas this year's theme, Public Works Connects Us, is a tribute to all public works employees who create the foundation of a stronger, more livable community. And whereas the year 2017 marks the 57th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, Brian Jacobs, Mayor of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, along with the Warrensburg City Council members, do hereby designate the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2017 as National Public Works Week in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, dated this 15th day of May, 2017.
Building safety.
All right, building safety.
Look at my guys.
All right, hold on, you can cook your tip.
No, I'm taking the tip.
Okay. I'm sure you can do it with a camera person for that occasion. You sure?
I'm sure.
Okay. All right. Warrensburg, Missouri Building Safety Month. Whereas the city of Warrensburg are continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency and resilience to the, in the built environment that affects our citizens. Both in everyday life and in times of natural disasters gives us confidence when our structures are safe and sound. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient and livable buildings. And whereas the theme of Building Safety Month 2017 is code officials, partners in the community's safety and economical growth, encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, backyard safety, energy efficiency and new technologies in the construction industry. Now, therefore, I, Brian Jacobs, Mayor of the City of Warrensburg, along with other members of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2017 as Building Safety Month in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, and call upon our citizens to pay special tribute to the building officials that contribute to the safety and well-being of our city, dated this 15th day of May, 2017. All right. I see you got a whole crowd in the back.
I did, yes, I brought my whole tribe here.
All right.
Let's come up here.
Excuse me. Will you?
Go to the other side. Those are over.
All right. National Police Week. Whereas National Police Week is the week of May 14th through 20th, and whereas May 15th has been cleared as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And by presidential order, flags are to be flown at half staff on this day. And whereas two Warrensburg police officers, City Marshal James Ryan and Officer James Bascom, were killed in the line of duty by being shot by a single assailant on April 19th, 2008. And whereas, on average, 59,069 peace officers are assaulted, 16,041 peace officers are injured and 167 peace officers are killed in the line of duty in the United States each year. In 2016, 145 peace officers were killed in the line of duty. Whereas peace officers in Warrensburg and our surrounding community bravely serve the public and unselfish risk life and serious bodily injury. And whereas the city of Warrensburg has constructed a 24,000 square foot police headquarters building that is now open to provide excellent service to our community. Now, therefore, I, Brian Jacobs, Mayor of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, do hereby commend our peace officers, recognize their services to our community and hereby proclaim the week of May 14th through May 20th as National Police Week and May 15th as Police Officer Memorial Day in Warrensburg, Missouri, dated this 15th day of May, 2017. Thanks a lot.
All right, that's it.
That's it?
It dissolves.
All right. Okay, we just need to approve the resolution or?
Need to read it.
Need to read it, okay. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Warrensburg, Missouri, supporting and authorizing the efforts by the Tree Board to apply for a 2017 TRIM grant.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, staff is asking that we be allowed to once again seek Missouri Department Conservation TRIM grant. Funds would be an amount of $10,000. City in kind would be an amount of $3,275 for this grant. We've used it successfully over the past several years. Got a number of trees taken out of the driveway in the park that were empty trees and it's been very good program for us.
Do you have any questions?
No, I think it's a great investment, return on investments there. I'm a resolution to be adopted.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. All right, ordinances, first and second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Vance Brothers for the 2017 Street Maintenance Program Polymer Overcoat in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, this is a continuation of our polymer overcoat program. We've done five streets this year that are larger polymer sections of roadway. With it also, we're going back in the five streets that we did last year, we're putting a top coat, a seal coat on those to really black them up and smooth them up a little better. We wanted to experiment this past year to see how they held over the wind and they held over well, so we want to continue on with the program. This contract being an amount of $215,366.14. Staff has asked approval for the contract with Vance Brothers.
Is this about what we spent last year or is it more?
We spent, uh, we spent last, last year, we spent about $140,000 on this.
Okay.
We were in the infancy of.
Just testing it?
Did we just have one bid last year?
Yes, we did.
And same this year?
Same, and Vance Brothers.
Pretty specialized area.
About the only ones that done this right in this region. We advertised through all of our asphalt contractors, but they were the only one that spent.
They actually make the material, don't they, Vance Brothers?
Vance Brothers, they actually make the oil that's used on that. They get the iron, mountain rock.
Right, right.
From over by St. Louis or down south.
Joffe. Okay.
And this is what you did in front of PCA Road.
Correct.
Okay.
I move that said bill be passed the second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Vance Brothers for the 2017 Street Maintenance Program Polymer Overcoat in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Chester Bro, Chester Bros Construction Company for the 2017 Street Maintenance Program Hot Mix Overlay in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Chester Bros did our asphalt work last year. They were, they successful, a little bitter this year. With the other bids we had, they came in at $216,444.55. Within that cost, we have $30,886 for asphalt that we placed in the cemetery. You will see in the bid tab discrepancy because it was produced by staff at the time working off of the qualities that were giving, given to the bidder. In actuality, there's 1,643 cubic yards less, or square yards less of milling that's going to be done, so that cost was cued down from what you recently see on their bid tab. So I just want to correct that with council. We are making an amount of what we had in our estimates for the project for any cost overruns that we might have, so you'll see us not exceed $218,671.60. Staff would ask City Council approve the contract with Chester Bros.
Questions?
I don't have any.
I move that said bill be passed the second reading by title.
I gotta look this direction, what's lost?
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a contract with Chester Bros Construction Company for the 2017 Street Maintenance Program Hot Mix Overlay in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to approve a scope of service in the form attached heretofu with Olson Associates under the terms and conditions of the city's annual engineer services agreement dated May 31st, 2016, for design services support for the Brady Commerce Park project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
The way we skipped HDR's contract.
Yep. They skipped?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whoops, I'm sorry.
You're one ahead.
Should I go one ahead? I should be here.
Right.
Oh, sorry about that, folks. Trying to get done faster, sorry. All right, let's try this again. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to approve a scope of service in the form attached heretofu with HDR Engineering, Inc., under the terms and conditions of the city's annual engineering service agreement dated December 15th, 2016, for the design of the Hawthorne Roundabout and the citywide traffic signal upgrade project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, we looked towards engineering, looked at our selection process and it's, in this project, we had the TDD portion that we were going to do engineering for, also the signal upgrade. And looking at that, we looked, we could combine engineering at this time because the two projects mirrored each other in some of the needs on them. So the project, actually, we have in the Hawthorne Roundabout, portion of engineering would be $195,866. Citywide traffic signal study, or signal upgrade, excuse me, is an amount of $278,690 for a total of $474,506 for engineering for the project. Staff would ask City Council approve the contract with an amount of $474,506 with HDR.
Do we, um, do you have any idea how much we think we're saving by combining those two together?
Basically, the two, two projects would take individual, some of the effort that's being done is actually the same effort that would take place on both with that because of the traffic studies that would have to be done. And HDR already has a lot of that information from the previous studies it did at the McQuarrie Corridor, so it makes a very good partnership for the city to do this project as a conclusion of the two projects together on that.
In addition, when it comes time to actually bid it out for projects to be constructed, that's when we really hope to see some significant savings because you only do one contract or only get economies of scale that will reduce the contract price. And we won't know that savings until we get the bid to.
Okay.
Will the stormwater impact on that roundabout? Will that be included in the Phase 5 study?
In the Phase 5 study, they will have that area looked at up there. During the engineering on that, there will be some additional work has to be done at that intersection where the roundabout would be placed.
Yeah.
So we'll have our engineers look at, make sure we have that taken care of.
Pretty substantial watershed that comes down through there.
There is, there is. More operators out there working this week and had a little.
Is that right?
Yeah. They'll be looking at that on their, that are GRA's, get that in part of their, their project on their portion.
So if I'm correct, where the roundabout may possibly go, that's still in the county?
Currently, we're working on getting that beat it over to us from the county.
Then we'll send the money first to get the studies. I mean, it's the county's responsibility right now, but then once we get it, then we'll do the studies on it.
Well, we're, you're approving the engineering, you're ready to move.
Right. So it's, and that's all of the work right now.
There's not a county cost share, at least a piece of this engineering cost?
No, they're, right now, their contribution is basically giving us the right of way of the cost.
Bill gave us this, just have it, you can have it.
Yeah.
That's what he said. He said, you're happy.
Yep, he's the more happy one to give it to us.
He said he didn't have any money in the county to do it, so then he's passing it on to the city.
So they'll give us the McGuire right of way towards north as well as the Holden Street right of way up to that intersection.
The gravel road or the, or the road that parallels 13 that's just barely off?
West to north of the northern.
Yeah, goes up to the church.
Right.
Is that going to remain, do you think, as a part of, once the engineering's done?
Probably not. Part of our discussion with our engineers in development roundabout there that that looks like that'll probably have to go away and they'll become a cul-de-sac up from the very western tip of Northern Hefro.
Okay. I was just curious more than anything because it looks like it would kind of muddy the water there to me.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's preliminary, looked at it, but you'd have to change the dynamics of the roundabout.
Right.
For five entry points versus four.
Okay.
I move that said bill be passed the second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to approve a scope of service in the form attached heretofu with HDR Engineering Incorporated, under the terms and conditions of the city annual engineering services agreement dated December the 15th, 2016, for the design of the Hawthorne Roundabout and citywide traffic signal upgrade projects in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. Okay, now let's do this one. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to approve a scope of service in the form attached heretofu with Olson Associates, under the terms and conditions of the city's annual engineering service agreement dated May 31st, 2016, for the design service support for the Brady Commerce Park project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the title pretty well states what we're, we're going for here. We have, we're working with getting Olson Associates on board to do the design and construction support for the roadway that is immediately east of Highway 13. And that portion is about 400-foot section of roadway, or excuse me, 800-foot section. 800, yeah. 800-foot, we've got so many figures running our head now. 800-foot roadway plus sanitary sewer engineering. The contract would be an amount of $261,400. Staff would ask that City Council approve the contract for this project.
Any of that recoverable through the bond process at all here?
Well, the, the road itself will be paid for by the bonds so that the, the community approves here in April. The sewer costs will be paid for through other city budget.
Okay, but this engineering piece?
I don't know that we're paying for engineering out of the bonds.
We're spending some money today, aren't we?
We are, so major capital.
Yeah, slims.
He's spending a lot.
Yeah, that's the, that's the fifth, no? So yes, the bond money is paying for the engineering for the road infrastructure, we're not the sewer.
Okay. I move said bill past second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to approve a scope of service in the form attached heretofu with Olson Associates, under the terms and conditions of the city annual engineering services agreement dated May 31st, 2016, for the design services support for the Brady Commerce Park project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. An ordinance adopting section 4-11, hours and manner of operations concerning dance halls of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Warrensburg.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this ordinance is a result of some disturbances we had in the downtown area. These disturbances occurred over the past, less than a year, at one particular business operating with a dance hall from it. After the incidents, I met with our downtown business owners with the help of Warrensburg Main Street who helped coordinate that meeting and took input from them. The city manager was there along with the city attorney. The meeting was very productive. We had close to 50 business owners from downtown at both sessions. We had two sessions to accommodate schedules. They offered some really good input and one of the things that came out of that was creating a requirement that dance halls close at 1:30, which would keep them in line with the other bars and restaurants in the area, make them get a conforming type business. We believe since all of the incidents took place after 1:30 that this may help curtail some of that illegal activity. So we wrote the ordinance up and then I also, in that public meeting, told them that before we did anything, we would come back to them and ensure that we weren't creating any unintended consequences with the ordinance. Again, Warrensburg Main Street sent out the ordinance to the businesses. We had a business owners' meeting and the businesses that showed up had no objection to the requirement. The ones who were at the meeting had no objections to the requirement as well. Additionally, I received some email feedback from one of our other business owners and he indicated that he didn't have any issue with the requirement to close at 1:30 as well. So what we're recommending is adoption of the ordinances written and restricting dance halls to a 1:30 season system.
Also include some languages regarding a disorderly business.
Yes, yeah, so that's the other part we added in is if you operate a disorderly business, there's now a provision that you have to operate an orderly business. If it's disorderly, we can actually come back and take some action against the business for being disorderly.
So on the dance hall license, I think you guys didn't have the authorization to go in?
On a dance hall license, we cannot go in and inspect. This won't change that part of it. We still can't join in and inspect with a dance hall license. We can with a liquor license, but we didn't make that change to this.
So like American Legion, they're okay. I mean, they close at 1:30 anyway, they can't stay open.
Yeah, there's, there's very few businesses that operate after 1:30 because most of them are operating with a liquor license.
Gotcha.
It's just this one area where businesses were operating, they weren't serving alcohol or food, and so they were able to operate all hours of the night if they wanted to.
What are the provisions that make something a dance hall? Because the same group is looking for other places in town that are not necessarily dance halls, but just large venues.
Live or pre-recorded music and provision of a space for dancing makes you a dance hall.
Temporarily even? Like the Rose Garden, could they do that one if they're not dancing and there's no live music?
The differences between public venues and, and, and private events, if it's open to the public with or without the payment of a fee, then it's a dance hall, to which these provisions would apply. If it's, if it's a private space, it's invitation only, it's a defined group of people. If it's, uh, if it's a private space, it's invitation only, it's a defined group of people, then it wouldn't be a dance hall.
Could that answer your question?
Kind of.
I don't think I know if it did or not, because I'm not sure it did.
Hypothetically, what if they wanted to go rent out the Yes Building? And the Yes Building were willing to, uh, that's just hypothetical here. And they were willing to stay open beyond that one-thirty time? Does this now classify them for temporary use as a dance hall, so that that cannot happen?
Okay, well, I mean, the first, the first answer to that is, this building, I think you're talking about, it's outside the city, so we'd have no regulation authority.
Okay, let me think of another.
But I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, what would otherwise be a private event space, i- if it, i- if it is leased out to someone that wants to use it as a, a public venue for an activity of this nature? That would be being conducted without a license. That would be illegal, because a license wouldn't be in place, because e- even for that short amount of time, you're operating a dance hall. Even if it's under a lease for a temporary space for a temporary amount of time.
Okay.
So, no, that, we already have regulations in place for requiring a license and then adding these operational guidelines. Those, that would cover it, whether it was operating as that three hundred and sixty-five days a year or popping up in an individual location for a weekend.
Got it.
The White Rose Pavilion, if they were going to have a dance, they would have the dance hall license.
Okay. The second question I have is, does this prevent, so let's say I'm having a wedding, and does it exclude weddings? Because it's a private event with a guest list?
Yes, because the definition of a public dance that's included in an earlier provision of the chapter would not include private events such as that.
Okay.
What's the process for getting a dance hall permit?
You make an application to the city collector.
Carl.
Yeah.
And is it, is it with that particular event, or is it with the hall and lasts for a year, multiple years?
It's by, I think it's by event. It's by location. It's by location? Yeah, it's by, it's by location, and it would last for an entire year, whether you're using it for that entire year or not.
What's the teeth behind, so say there is, uh, other than disturbing the peace or, or whatever, is there any other teeth to revoke the dance hall permit? Should they, uh, abuse some of these?
Yes, there's a provision in that chapter for revocation of the license if, if there's been violations of the provisions of that chapter.
And was that there previously, or is that just in this, this?
No, that's always been there.
That's always been there.
This is just adding additional operational guidelines that if they are violated, would trigger those disciplinary procedures.
Okay.
So the only difference I see possibly is that same event can still come to that same place we're talking about and only stay open at one-thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
But now it also has to be an orderly function. So you, you have this disorderly business, so if you have a business that's consistently having issues and creating disorder and public affray, we now can say you're in violation of the provision of the dance hall license.
And if there were alcohol involved, then it would be an automatic violation of the dance hall?
If there is not a liquor license in place for that establishment, it would not be lawful, because it is a public place for the serving and consumption of liquor to take place.
All right.
But they could bypass all of this by calling it invitation only?
Well, y- yes, anybody could say that it's that, but if it doesn't conform to that, and we quite frequently use undercover individuals to check compliance for all manner of regulatory items in the city, then that would be prosecuted as a violation. And in this case, they were selling tickets online, so.
Sure.
And, and taking money.
That's an invite? I gave you money, they invited me.
Facebook invite that is pretty public. Okay.
I move that said bill be passed the second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance adopting section four-eleven, hours and manner of operation concerning dance halls of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Warrensburg. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. All right. An ordinance suspending the provision of section three dash fourteen for certain special events, June eighth, two thousand seventeen, pursuant to section three dash fourteen B of the Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is for Warrensburg Main Street's first outdoor concert on Pine Street. And, uh, if some, if somebody remember, last year, we had the street blocked off and had, uh, open containers during that entire event from the hours of six to, um, eleven. And, um, so we're wanting to do the same thing this year. Main Street's asked for that, they've got their event planned, and so we are bringing this to you to suspend that ordinance for that night.
There were no issues last year with any of that, yeah.
Because it was a pretty tame crowd.
Yeah, usually is.
No, and, and, uh, there was a lot of discussion about expanding that and, and doing it, uh, more frequently, and that just hasn't been something that, that's come up. But, uh, it was very successful. Well, there was two events last year, there's two this year as well. We'll bring the other one to you later.
Is this on a Thursday this year?
I know, that's what I thought, is it Thursday?
Yes.
They changed it this year.
Okay.
Apparently, a lot of folks go out of town on Fridays to the lake, so what was having on Thursday, and that way, uh, we'll keep, uh, get more of our books.
Gotta go to work the next day, but that's okay.
Is this the only avenue to seek that kind of, uh, event, to be able to close down the street?
Currently, yes. What, uh, what needs to happen is, uh, if we're doing the open container part of it, um, we have to come to you to suspend that ordinance for that event. And there's a, a permit and a process that you have to go through for that.
They don't have to come to council to get permission to close the street. We have a process.
Just for the open container?
That we as staff can approve that. It's the issue of waiving the ordinance regarding open container for alcohol. Like, it states in the, in the code specifically, that council has to see that and approve that every time.
And they have to have a non-for-profit right? Not, anybody can apply for one piece, right?
Or they could bring it, but we may not approve it. Can anybody bring it?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
It's nonprofit, and so we have the discretion of the councils to whether it's approved or not approved.
And it's just Pine Street only? Just for that block?
That's all they're asking for, yes. It'll be blocked off at Holden, um, at Washington Street, and also in the two alleys.
I realize this doesn't entirely go with this, but do you think there will be any noise complaints?
Do you have any last?
Going on until, it was a Friday last year though, wasn't it? People having to get up early for work the next day? Guess we'll find out?
Yeah, we'll find out.
Okay.
It's over at eleven, right?
On Pine Street.
It says eleven thirty. It says eleven thirty.
Moved to pass said ordinance to second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance suspending the provisions of section three dash fourteen for certain specific, special, excuse me, events, June eighth, twenty seventeen, pursuant to section three dash fourteen B of the Code of Ordinances. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the city of Warrensburg to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the investment of public funds through the Missouri Securities Investment Program.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, uh, the finance staff has identified, uh, an investment vehicle for city funds. Uh, we have been looking for, for different ways of, the first five portfolio, and I think this is a great opportunity. The Missouri, Missouri Security Investment Program is a pool. Uh, it was started for schools, uh, a way for them to invest money, and now it's kinda grown to all municipalities and those type of organizations in the state. And it offers, uh, a rate that we can get that's higher than the, the rate that we're getting with our bank now. When we, uh, signed the contract with Equity Bank, we received a seventy-five basis points, or point seven-five percent for on our deposits, but the, the tip with that was that we would give the T-dill rate plus five percent if, if the T-dill rate raised above seventy-five basis points. Currently, it's around eighty-two, so we're getting around eighty, eighty, point eighty-seven percent on our, uh, deposits. And we'll be able to gain about, about thirty, thirty basis points, or, or point three percent on our investments by going over most of.
So in the past that we've been making, and this is just a question, because I'll have a point later in a minute, with the city's money going in there, we have earned interest off of it in the past, like we're doing now on this?
Uh, in the, what do you mean, in the, in the deposits?
Right.
Yes, our deposits, yes, we're, we're, we're getting, uh, point eighty-seven percent right now on deposits.
The reason I said is, because I, if I use my, in my business, if I, I cannot make interest on other people's money without them knowing it. That's kinda different, huh?
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah, because these are our city funds.
Yeah, turn, yeah, turn money one to pass this through the process.
What's our average balance?
Uh, around ten million. And so we have to keep eight million in our, in our bank account to keep that, uh, interest rate with equity. So we'd be looking to invest about one point five million. We will gain that extra interest off those funds.
Good job.
Any risk added?
Uh, the only risk, the, the normal risk you have with, with investing in government treasuries, uh, the government goes under. But we have bigger problems.
We have bigger problems then.
Bigger problems that are, are, uh.
I move said bill be passed the second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city of Warrensburg to enter into an intergovernmental cooper- cooperation agreement for the investment of public funds through the Missouri Securities Investment Program. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Hawthorne Development Transportation Development District for the construction and improvement of transportation infrastructure.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is the other part, the other part to, uh, what's him that talked about earlier with the, uh, the TDD and Roundabout. On January, uh, the staff had came to council and asked, uh, what was the council's recommendation? And the Roundabout was suggested. So this, this agreement with the TDD would allow them to, allow us to be able to hire the contractors, do the work, and then the TDD can pay for it, they will fund it. Uh, in this agreement, they will, it will not, the money will not flow through the city, it will flow directly from the TDD to the, uh, contractors, but the city will approve all invoices. Also, also, uh, another thing that stands out in this, we did have two projects for the TDD. We have, uh, the Roundabout and then the Cooper Street intersection. Both of these are in this agreement, but it is not, the, we do not have to do the Cooper Street until funds are identified. So if we, if we later on down the road, we feel that we have money to do the Cooper Street intersection, we'll do it, and I'll be told by the city.
Plus if they sell that land, kind of east of that, there's a, there's a plot.
It's already sold.
Oh, sorry.
It's a lease now.
So right now, the TDD does not have enough money to do both projects. And I think these are the last projects we can do with this, and then it'll expire. And, uh, and the TDD is not renewable, so, uh, chances are, this project of the intersection with the Roundabout at Hawthorne and thirteen will be, uh, the final project that this TDD will pay for. Because we'll use up all the remaining funds, and there will not be any money left over for the Cooper Street improvements.
Moved past said ordinance by second reading by title, two second reading by title.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Hawthorne Development Transportation Development District for the construction and improvement of transportation infrastructure. This is for adoption or rejection. Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. All right. Discussions will take place at the meeting, so I'm assuming this is for the Stevenson Fund request?
So if you recall, um, several weeks ago, we had a request from representatives regarding voice state and having money from this fund paid for. And it's led us on the agenda after your discussion tonight. Matthew's done some research regarding, uh, the policies for these. And we have discovered that some of these funds already have policies in place. But I don't believe we still, we still, we weren't able to find any action taken by previous counselors regarding setting the placing of policies regarding the Stevenson Fund specifically. There were some for some of the other funds to offer.
I think we might have had something from the Stevenson.
It was the Chrissy Fund.
Yeah. Stevenson, uh, was basically, it can run off of the, we can, we can donate the, uh, interest that was given to the account. We can't touch the principal, and the principal is, uh, restricted right now, so you wouldn't be able to touch it anymore.
There's still sixty, sixty thousand?
I think it was more than that, I think more like seventy.
Was it seventy?
I think there's.
I think seventy thousand unrestricted, sixty is restricted.
Okay.
Um, but it was council's recommendation to, to put up a, uh, a policy together and make it a thousand dollars per year, I mean, per, uh, request, five thousand dollars per year, and so we did do that.
There was something else that I think Danielle brought up about this. Did you, you recall? There were, there were two, two restrictions that we talked about.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think those, those were.
I thought that was it.
Yeah, those were.
Thousand dollars to request, and nearly five times a year.
Okay, okay.
And it'll get five requests, five thousand dollars per year.
All right.
Five different organizations could, could request a thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, there was one that we put a restriction on. I did not, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought the, uh, the policy was a factor. But there, I think it's the, the teachers' fund, uh, the one we give out here for the, the employees, for the scholarship.
Oh, the Nancy Anderson Scholarship Fund.
That, that one will be limited to a thousand dollars per year.
Okay.
Instead of five.
So this would apply to all the other funds except for the Nancy Anderson Scholarship?
Nancy Anderson would be a one-time annual donation of a thousand or?
Yes.
Total?
Yeah, it was set up to be a scholarship for graduating seniors of employees.
Okay.
So I guess the discussion among us is to set the policy, to try to figure out what's best for this Stevenson Fund and what's not best?
I think this one here is, if you guys want to, uh, fund this request or not.
So the last, last time you guys discussed.
And how much?
Direction from council staff was to create a policy of, you can only, we'd only do a, a dispersment of a thousand dollars, and we'd only do that five times a year out of this specific fund. So staff has implemented that policy. Now you have your first request underneath that policy, where they're requesting money from this fund to support, uh, the Boys State Program.
Have we funded anything else this year? Didn't we fund the seniors?
You did the project graduation.
How much was that?
A thousand. And then, um, earlier this year, there was six hundred dollars that went to the Stevenson Fund for the, from the Stevenson Fund for the Christmas. And I think that's been it for the year.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Yeah, those two.
Are there typical requests that come later in the year?
We'll get one from the Teachers Warehouse, most likely, for five hundred.
And those are the normal three.
Those are the, the ones we, here, it's just hard to say yes or no, it's one, and then come December, you don't have any money to donate.
What's the intent of the Stevenson Fund?
It's for the needy poor, it's for school, um, type situations to, mainly for, he had, he specified the needy poor, but he also said for school reasons, so that was one reason why the original request came in for project graduation, because it was for a school function.
I'd make a motion that we, uh, approve the Boys State, uh, funding for one of our thousand dollars.
Is there a way that we can see if, um, it's going toward, I mean, I don't know if Gary has a system by which he's establishing greater needs for certain students who can't necessarily afford it on their own?
It's, I mean, I, I can speak a little bit on the program, I can familiar with it, so. Um, the, the way the program is set up, that no parent can pay for their child to go. They have to, it has to be sponsored by businesses. It's not a, you know, one parent can't write a check and say, I'll just pay for my kid, they have to get sponsors from businesses.
Yeah.
So a business is the city?
Well, it, I mean, one of the reasons why they brought it is because I know, um, I know Leighton, you know, Leighton sponsors it. Several other, you know, councils sponsor the event. So it was, it was brought to my attention and I says, well, can't do nothing unless you bring it to us, and so they brought it to us, so.
I think my only concern, I think it's great, the opportunity, my only concern would be that it's not necessarily going guaranteed toward the intent of the fund, which is for the needy.
And then I think of the Girls State too, we do this for Boys State, then we have Girls State.
I think that would be my only concern if we say yes to this and that's not necessarily guaranteed that it fits in line with what the fund was created for.
I think my big fear was when Gary came was now we've opened up this, now everybody's gonna start. Even though we're only doing a thousand and five times. I, I seem to remember he wanted about four hundred dollars.
Well, no, he wanted, he wanted twelve hundred.
He asked for six.
Four hundreds for each, each one, okay, I knew that stuck in my mind.
Something like that, I mean, you know.
But then he said, well, whatever you...
Right, he, he shot for the moon, which, I mean, you know, so, that's Gary, I mean.
So you want, go ahead and make that?
I, I would make the motion that, that we would support the Boys State.
What level are you recommending?
At, uh,
To full, fully fund it? Or up to our max, or should it be one student or two students?
Four hundred a boy, if you did two of them, that's eight hundred.
Eight hundred is what I would, I would rather see, yeah.
Okay, so for eight hundred. This is for yes or no. Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
No.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes. Okay, mayor will appoint you to the boards and commissions. I think that was the next one for this year.
Uh-huh, it is.
Yep, so, okay. I had four of them I'd like to appoint. Is for the Historic Preservation Commission, Andrea Glenn. For the Variance Board, Wilford Crespo. I can't even say her name, I've never called her that in my life.
He's Willie, isn't he?
Really, yeah, it's Willie Crespo, right. Uh, for Parks and Recreation Board, Casey Gates. And then, um, also for the Parks and Recreation Board, Valerie Creer.
My only request on this, and I know I talked to Brian earlier, is if we could get these a little sooner, because I really, it's mayor appointments and I did discuss this at the mayor, but I would like more than about a couple hours for me to think about some of these seriously. I know it's hard to find volunteers for these volunteer boards totally, and so these people are stepping up and wanting to be on them, so I don't want to deny them, but I would like to kind of just have a little bit if we could. I understand we do need to fill them, we have a lot of vacancies.
And that was my mistake, because Harold had called me and I said, yeah, let's go ahead and just, just go ahead and put them all in the package and then, you know.
I just want to say that publicly.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's hard to fill these vacancies. We also have that Trish.
Which one?
Trish.
No, okay.
Well, I would echo that, because I haven't had a chance to look at any of them.
Well, as I said, the only, the only one I absolutely positively got to fill today is the Variance Board, because the Variance needs one person to be able to do its meeting. I mean, if you, if we want to hold off, I don't have a problem holding off to the next meeting, and you guys look at those names over and...
Yeah, like I expressed, I'm not gonna say absolutely not, but I would like, in the future, definitely. But if you need time, we can table it till the next meeting.
I'm okay with doing the Variance so that they can perform their function, yeah.
So you want to go ahead and move to approve?
I would move to approve the Variance.
Well, then, take the names I just gave you and consider those.
Gotcha, next meeting.
They will be at the next package, so.
Okay, great.
Lund?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes. City managers report?
Uh, just a few things. Number one, while we're here, I wanted to say thank you to Main Street for having a great, um, summer concert series kickoff with the Burbs Box. And especially to our city staff that helped all day in helping get that ready and helping man, uh, the event. It was a great turnout, it was fun to see kids performing for kids, and the families having a good, a good time. It was a great event, heard nothing but positive comments about it.
Me too, it was great.
Secondly, uh, I'd like to recognize another one of our employees. Uh, recently, Danielle Wolf, our administrative project manager, attended the National Forum for Black Public Administrators and received a prestigious award. She received the two thousand seventeen Stephen D. Ford Young Public Administrator of the Year Award. So she was honored and recognized. We definitely appreciate having her with us, she's been doing great work and we've been a great asset, uh, to our management team. And then finally, just remind, uh, the council that, uh, the reason we're not having a council meeting next week is because I will be in Vegas at the ICSC Recon Conference. And looking forward to following up with some, uh, previously established appointments with some businesses that are interested in considering Warrensburg as a future place to do business. I don't have anything else.
I saw that we had the letter from, uh, Representative House.
Yep, we have a response to the letter we sent.
These, these numbers?
Yep, this is the one that responded at this time, well, actually it was two of them, it was House and Senate on the, the coast.
Right, right.
The only two that we received, they responded back.
Looks like it's, uh, possibly gonna get some legs anyway.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
They passed real ID now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they should be able to move on to other things now.
Yeah, maybe.
Old Drum Plaza's. Jeff and Bone, you guys get that email about Plaza?
Yeah, that's cool.
The man's best friend?
Now there's historical dog.
Old Drum Plaza Committee.
Yep.
Has informed the Senate that all three seventy-six has passed the Old Drum, and now the official historical dog of the state of Missouri.
All right.
Yes.
There you go, Julie.
Yes, it was good news.
All right. You gonna tell us some good news around here?
Yeah, uh, uh, for the month of April, uh, sales taxes were up slightly. Lot of taxes were up as well as franchise, motor vehicle, and property. So we're doing pretty good in a few areas. I have some other follow-up to discuss with Julie, um, as well. We, um, I, I want to keep everybody informed with the, the GL bond. So when we do the levy in August, that we'll do the levy for the GL bonds and whatever. So we'll start the, the process of getting those, uh, moving forward next month. So I'll be coming to you for, uh, selection of the attorney, the bond attorney, and for, uh, Parker Jeffrey to be our advisor on those, so.
So when you say attorney, is there like a RFP that goes out for attorneys that want this, or there's already one?
No, not really, yeah, because we, we use, uh, Gilmore Bill. And so they'll, they'll be our bond attorney on that. As long as the council is okay with that.
I appreciate you doing the, the breakdown on the sales tax that you put in the package, it's, uh, I don't know if I appreciate the numbers, but...
I like what you see, glad you can look at it.
Be careful what you ask for, I guess, huh? Okay, thank you.
All right, you hear that, Barb?
Yeah, nothing additional.
No, all right, Slim?
The plane I started on the east side of town this week, it looks like next week, uh, we will attend on, if you could say so, for the, for east side. Like, uh, we got a lot of people out, the prices crap are, must be up pretty high right now. There's not a fine center on the street this morning, so.
That's true.
You got anything, Ben, or Gary? No, Danielle?
Yeah, it's two, just, well, to highlight two things that are already in the report. But we did select a company to do our community survey. So this is something that we had discussions about, we're gonna catch a couple months, help with getting information, so we can have an agenda, um, for what the community needs are. So, um, we did, we went with ETC Institute, which is in the Lake of Kansas. And so that could be a roughly three-month process, um, three-month process, um, to get the survey information back. And then just to take notice that the diversity and inclusion task force didn't include their minutes, and, um, the letter that it's going to be sent to, I think, I think it's gonna be sent to the paper and also to the Johnson County Boy Services.
Is that the, is that the company you used in Iowa?
It is, it's also the same company that did the survey for the Parks Department here a couple years ago as well.
Good.
I just, I need you to show us all that stuff from that one company.
Yeah, it's the same company. One of the advantages for them, we did have, uh, another good response as well. Uh, but one of the reasons that we liked ETC, or ETC as a staff, is because they do thirty different communities across the state of Missouri. So they really provide us some comparability within the state of Missouri, not just nationally. And that was ultimately one of the deciding factors for us.
It's always important to.
We're still talking about a little bit more.
Super.
What you got, Greg?
Uh, just a couple of things I'd like to highlight, again, I don't think we've all been together, uh, to where we've been able to highlight the good audit that we have in Missouri and Iowa with Patrol Criminal Justice Information System, it was a great audit. We found no deficiencies, and we're proceeding through, uh, getting all of the staff trained in terms of our managers and supervisors, uh, so that we can talk about, um, situations that we have, uh, when they come up, so. That's ongoing. The other thing, um, I just wanted to thank, uh, Parks Department, uh, the Police Department, um, IT, um, we had a great, uh, summer paperwork party last, uh, Wednesday and, and essentially processed approximately forty summer employees for, for parks and rent, while, uh, it wasn't perfect by any means. Uh, we learned a lot from it, and, uh, I think it was a very positive experience and, and we had a, a great chance to meet, meet some good, good young kids that came through. So, uh, we'll continue to, to work to improve that process as we go forward in other years.
Good.
Yes, I want to thank, um, all the, the, uh, Human Resource Department, Finance, and IT, because we couldn't do what we do without their support. And we did hire forty-one new employees and we had about sixty rehires, and so that's how large it was. And, and we also had an opportunity to do some training that night as well, and I know that, uh, Rachel had said that was great that they were still in the building, and if they didn't fill out their paperwork correctly, we were able to catch them and make those, those corrections right away, so. We really appreciate the support in, um, in our hiring process. It is a lot of documents, there is a lot of opportunity for mistakes, and, but having them work through it and through the different people working at it, uh, we were able to catch any mistakes that, that were made. So I was very pleased, I think it's a great opportunity for us, paperwork party in the summer, we might even look at it in other times as well when you're hiring, uh, a lot of employees, uh, and we do that throughout the year. Well, some of our employees stay on, others, um, you know, go back to college. Uh, most of our employees aren't college students, uh, some of them are in high school, just leaving, being seniors in high school and then, uh, going on to college. And then summer, or that next fall, so, uh, it was a great experience for us as well. We had a park board meeting April twenty-sixth, we didn't get to really talk about that. Um, we nominated Mary Pat Purcell as Volunteer of the Year, she works on the Parks for the Twenty-First Century. That's where, uh, people are able to give donations to the Parks Department, and she oversees that with a, a committee that has been formed throughout the years. Uh, Girl Scout troop six eleven, uh, requested to put in a free library at the Hawthorne Park, so the board approved that. So we're gonna have another free library, we have one at Cape Hallow and now at Hawthorne Park, so. Ballgames are going, concession stands are open, NASA will open May the twenty-sixth for the public. We'll also look at, uh, May the twenty-fifth, that's a Thursday, of opening up for just the season pass holders. And so you'll start hearing more information on that, and so, that's all I have, thank you.
Just a couple of things, we went on a mutual aid assist the county fire department on a structured fire Friday. They were a little shorthanded, so we went out there and helped. Uh, also Saturday, we assisted the city of Clinton, they came up needing help, uh, getting their certification testing done, and we were able to have the certified evaluators here and with the training area we have behind Station Two, we got saw, we were able to help them certify seven firefighters.
I'm super excited about this, and we've got a prescription drug takeback box in our lobby now. And we're gonna be opening for business tomorrow, so.
Really?
We're gonna send out a, a notice to our, our press and public to let them know. Um, I want to thank the Missouri Partners in Prevention and Amy Keiger with the Office of Violence and Substance Abuse Prevention, uh, they paid for it. So we got it for free. And then also Brian Jones and Aaron Shaw installed it in the lobby for us, so it's bolted to the floor so that somebody can't do a smash and grab and take, uh, take the box out with them, so. I'm really excited about it, we're following that with, uh, we had the takeback bylaw a few weeks ago, we've, uh, took in several hundred pounds of, uh, prescription drugs, we always do really well there. We'll continue to participate in those twice a year, but then we'll have the box year-round, uh, from eight, eight to five for people to drop off on wanted prescription drugs, unused prescription drugs. Um, and hopefully, uh, keep your homes safe from, uh, youngins who might think those are okay, or for people who have relatives pass and they have lots of drugs and they don't know what to do with them.
Right. You'll be open at eight in the morning?
Eight AM.
Uh, be your first customer.
I might be your second. I've started a bunch of that laying around, so.
Don't put it down the sewer.
Thank you.
Slowly looking after you.
I know, I know, don't do that.
You got anything, Doug?
I do not.
All right, Casey? Danielle?
Uh, those proclamations that were, that the mayor read tonight, very, very important stuff. You don't realize what public works does until you get a chance to look inside, so to speak. Uh, they do a lot with, with a little. And the codes people, they're the unsung heroes, because they report by exception, so. Everything they do causes a stir, it seems, uh, but they keep us safe. And the cops, what can you say? Uh, that memorial you've got, uh, in the lobby is a constant reminder, uh, you know, really, it is. It's all like that.
Uh, I just want, and Danielle said something, but the diversity and inclusive tax, I've asked her to put these minutes in there so you all can kind of understand what's going on and that. Any questions, either call me or her, as she starts putting those in, I sit at the meeting with them and I give them a little questions every once in a while, but I think it's good for the council to understand we're volunteers ourself and we're sitting on these boards, so communication between us on our boards would be great, so. And I had a great time last Thursday, my grandson, he can't wait till next year, he's like, when's it gonna be? Center Stage and Twister did awesome, that was so much fun, so I really liked that. That's all I got.
What you got, Cindy?
I don't have anything.
You got anything at all, okay.
I do.
So.
Got to vote close.
And, well, and I don't... And, well, and I don't have anything either. We do have appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. I don't think anybody signed up back there, but just wanted to be a hundred percent sure.
I don't think the list up there would be.
That's a good way to know.
I did that one other time.
And you were gonna speak? There's two of you back there, so. Okay, all right. Appearances not listed? Okay.
Can I say one thing? Stevenson Fund. Make sure that the public knows you're not giving away five thousand dollars every year because in fourteen years you won't have any money to give away. So it has to be a cautious deciding vote by the council and render a decision on whether it really meets the guidelines or not. But it's Stevenson Fund, you have to protect. So just be cautious with what you're doing in the future. You're not just losing, are not losing, but giving away every year five thousand dollars. After a point, you won't have anything left. It was just word of.
Okay.
What I thought about when you were discussing.
Thank you. All right. Somebody want to read the, read the other post session?
Vote to close part of this meeting pursuant to section six one zero point zero two one of the revised statutes of Missouri relating to one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the city in any confidential or privileged communication between the city and its representatives and its attorneys. Two, leasing, purchase or sale of real estate where public knowledge might adversely affect the amount paid in the transaction. Three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body when a personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Twelve, documents or any documents related to negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected. Thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment.
Lund.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes. Sign it after.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Isn't that magazine you were in?
Not that particular one, but that, that magazine, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just letter from the council, or from the representatives, council members.
Yeah, it should be. Don't have.